And I would ask crew to please take the roll.
Okay, good afternoon. Chair Brian Cafarelli?
I am here.
And Vice Chair Christopher Brogan?
I am here, although I can't get into my iPad right now, so I'll continue to try that. And we'll join, but I am here.
Okay, thank you. Secretary Marlene Batista?
Here. I'll be coming video on in a few minutes.
Oh, sorry.
Just I'll put video on in a few minutes.
Okay. I heard panelists. So John Matola?
Here.
John Winn?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Jay Gross is not present for the record.
Okay.
Then the next is our pledge allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the
Republic. Stands. One nation. indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That works much better in person. I can say experience now. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the May 25th meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on the, did everyone receive them and are there any comments on those?
They were sent with the agenda, so if you got the agenda, you got the minutes.
Do I see any or hear any comments on the May 25th meeting minutes? I will entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Whitman, second by John Matola. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda, agenda item number five is the post-public hearing review and discussion. So now I think that Steve had indicated that he was going to go through, you know, kind of section by section, and I, and I look forward to that. I wanted to just take this opportunity beforehand to thank everyone. If this is our last meeting, maybe if it's, if it's a premature goodbye, but you know, we, we really have given a lot of time over the course of almost nine months, and I think it's 24 meetings. And I've enjoyed working with all of you and hope you found it as rewarding as I have. So today, we're going to be making what I think are final edits to these draft charter, which includes consideration of the, of the comments that we've heard from the public and agencies and other constituencies throughout this process. We do have that comment grid that I have to, you know, hats off to our counselor, Steve Mendick, for really compiling that and has hundreds of thoughtful suggestions that people took the time to express during this process and you know, we've discussed them as a group and prioritize our revisions in light of the time that we had to complete our work. So I think in this document, you'll find that we did set out to address the form of government by and large and undertook that review and, and you know, tried to decide whether or not Fairfield could be, you know, benefit by governing by a different form and heard from all those experts and, and similarly situated towns. In the end, this document, I think, represents that we've decided to keep the framework of governing Fairfield in its current format by and large. And we made a lot of beneficial changes, I think, that will serve our community and town operation better. And they're contained here that we'll review and edit today. And if we approve it, will, the submission will highlight those changes in our transmittal letter, which we could discuss on another agenda item to the Board of Selectmen and the presentation that we give to them. So without, you know, further ado, or is there any comments from other commissioners and then we'll turn it over to Steve? All right, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, we'll, we'll do formal thanks at the end of the meeting. But I wanted to thank several people, some of who testified the other night and others who had send in their cards and letters. Kathleen Griffin, Judith Ewing, Mr. Demchowsky, who, who is, Demchowsky, Don, Demochowski, who's on, who's on the line here today and Jill Jacobson for the Board of Education, all of whom sent in some very thoughtful corrections, erratas and, and whatnot that are going to be reflected in the final version of the document. So if we go to chapter one, I'll talk a little bit about some observations that were made regarding some of the defined terms. Somebody had raised concerns about the number of different terms that we have in here, appointed town officer, town official, town officer, elected town official. Most of these are terms that are in the current charter. And what I tried to do is I tried to define them, confine them to the offices and, and people that fall within those defined terms. And attention was brought to it, and I've made a couple of cleanup corrections in the document. One of the concerns was, do these terms apply to officials that are not named in the charter or to boards and commissions that are not named in the charter? So I made it clear in the document, you'll see in the final version, that these terms, that the charter applies to everything. The charter applies to everything in the town, but specifically with regard to those definitions, they do apply to boards and commissions that may be created outside of the charter by ordinance, for example. And so they're all included in here, and I want to thank the member of the public who made that observation. I think it was a really good observation and important observation. I also, in the definition section at the request of the Vice Chair, expanded the footnote, there already was a footnote in here, dealing with the term elector so that when somebody looks at the charter, they will be able to look at a comment of the 22, 2022 Charter Revision Commission and see what the statutory framework was and what the statutory definition was for that important, that important defined term elector. So somebody can immediately see what the document meant at the time. Couple of other cosmetic changes that were recommended by the Vice Chair, who I, who I want to thank for going through this and also John Winn for going through, Commissioner Winn for going through the document as well. You will see as you go through the document, the final document that you'll receive in the next couple of days. I did, as a result of the questions raised by the definitions, went through the document and looked at the definitions. And you will see that I made some editorial changes that are really Scrivener's changes where I was using a defined term and then repeating a body that was included in the defined term separately. So you'll see that I eliminated a lot of delineations because there was no need to delineate since the term is defined. And again, thank you for that recommendation. I'm going to stop, Mr. Chairman, when we get to a substantive matter that has been raised by a member of the commission. There were emails that went out. So I want to make sure that we, I do it in order and the next item is a substantive matter that was recommended in section 1.5B. I'm sorry, 14.5D. I believe Vice Chairman Brogan has a comment on the fair and equal treatment paragraph.
Okay, Mr. You're muted. But it's good to see you. I'm glad you joined us. I mean, and
Well, you know, one little thing didn't quite work out then, but I figured it out.
Yeah.
So this section, I think I've talked about before. This, this is an addition to the standards of conduct. I think it's the only addition. You know, it's, well, maybe it's a good idea, maybe not. I think it's, it's not keeping with the general things here, which are mostly conflict of interest and self-interest. I think it's the type of thing that should be in a code of ethics perhaps, but also in the context of other things relating to conduct and whatnot. So I would move to take it out of here. At one point, I would have maybe required the town to adopt a code of ethics. I think at this point in the process, putting a requirement in of the RTM perhaps is not the best thing to do, but I would urge that, maybe it's something we can do in the transmittal letter, that the town really do enact a code of ethics. It's kind of hard to believe we don't have one. And I think in there, they're going to have a discussion of this and other matters like it. But I do think in here, it's a little bit out of context. And I think it does require a little bit more thought and discussion. So I would move to take it out.
I don't have a problem with that. Does anybody have any comment on that? John Matola?
Just so I understand, you want to take the entire section D out?
Sorry, no, just the moreover, no town officer, employee, RTM member, blah, blah, blah. So knowingly impugn the reputation of a member of the public at a public hearing or that, just that line.
Yep, that, I'm good with that. Thank you.
Okay.
Works for me.
Can we, hey, Brian, when we go through these and do these, can we just like, because we're getting near the end, officially vote? Like a yea or nay on each of these changes?
That's a good idea.
Sure, let's take a vote on, on that one. All those in favor signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Any, I see it's unanimous, so.
So you don't need a roll call if it's unanimous under the statute, the new statute, so.
Just so it starts with moreover and ends with event?
Correct.
Right, got it. Thank you.
The next change, recommended change at the public hearing last week, again, I think this came from the member of the Board of Education, Ms. Jacobson, was concerned about the possible confusion in having Roberts rules as your general rule, but then mandating that every board or commission adopt rules. And so I wanted to recommend that instead of mandating it, we should put, they have discretion to adopt rules. But I was also going to recommend some language that would be attached to that section to make sure that the rules that they adopt are rules that are consistent with best practices and parliamentary procedure and consistent with the open, the open meeting requirements of this charter. You want to make sure. Somebody had actually suggested in a conversation that maybe you make the rules subject to a two-thirds vote of a board or commission as well to make sure that there's a consensus on what the rules are so that a autocratic chair doesn't get to impose rules that make it difficult for other members to participate or for members of the public to, to participate. So I wanted to see whether or not there would be an inclination to make the adoption of rules discretionary for boards and commissions, but also to make sure that if they do it, they do it consistent with best practices. And I would, I would suggest unless people have an objection, that the rules be adopted by two-thirds vote of the members of the board and commission.
Can you just tell us what page, what section, what site, what number?
I'm sorry, section 1.6C. That's where we have rules of order?
One, yep.
Which is Roberts rules is the general rule. And the adoption of rules is a shall. In fact, I think in the draft I sent over to you, you may have a markup.
Yep, it says may.
Yeah. Had a suggested may. But the other language that I'm coming up with regarding best practices and consistency with the open meeting provisions, which are just below that section, are not in writing at this point.
I, I don't have a problem with that, but I'll, I'll tell you what I don't want to do, just at the outset of this meeting. What I don't want to do is be writing stuff and then adopting stuff and not seeing in its final form. So if we have to have one more meeting to come back and go through the document to clean that up and do that, I think that we should. But I'm incredibly uncomfortable just adding in the language right now and then not seeing in its final form when it goes to the Board of Selectmen. I don't know how anybody else feels about that.
What I suggested earlier is that before Brian and Chris send the transmittal letter and the document out, I would run the draft, the substantive changes by the entire commission so that they could be looked at before it goes out. And if there's any objection, they can always hold the document up. If there's significant objection, or we'll, we'll move the document if everybody's comfortable with the change that has been made. I'll leave that up to you.
I guess we'll see, I guess we'll see how it goes. I just don't like not seeing something before I give it a final vote.
Does anyone else have thoughts on that?
I, I agree that seeing it in its final form will be good before we actually fully put this to bed. So if we need another meeting to get a look at that writing when it's been put down on paper, if that makes perfect sense, I'll make that happen with my own schedule.
John Matola?
Yeah, I, me too. I agree with what Pam and John Winn said. And I, and the concept also, just on the substance, I, I agree with that too. Like Steve Mednick said.
Do you want to establish a meeting in the next 48 hours? If that's the case, I'll have this turned around tomorrow.
Yeah, that would be fabulous. I think that would be great. I, I think it's going to be too stressful otherwise. I, I just don't want to adopt something that I didn't see the final language on.
And, and I, I would imagine Steve and Brian, that if we do this, that the next meeting should be very short, I would think.
Yeah.
Hopefully we're not going to have a million of these things. Steve Mednick, fingers crossed, and we, it should be a quickie, so.
I, 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 I agree. What I want to say is that Wednesday, I have a six o'clock and a seven o'clock, 7:30 meeting, so I could do like a five o'clock. Or if it's going to be brief, maybe a seven o'clock. But whatever you guys want to do.
Which day was that?
Wednesday.
Okay.
I could even do, let's say tomorrow. I should have these done for tomorrow, frankly.
Well, we can't notice it fast enough for tomorrow to meet a full eye anyway.
Tomorrow, no, got it, got it, 24 hours notice. So it'd have to be Wednesday. You want to try Wednesday at five o'clock?
Sure.
Fine with me.
Yep.
Because I agree with John Matola, I do not think it's going to be a long meeting.
It can't be. Not that.
All right, so we'll just do that.
I, I'm, I, I have to jump at 5:45.
Me too.
I don't think it'll be long. If it takes more than 15 minutes, I would be shocked. All right, so let's say five o'clock Wednesday.
Yeah.
So Brian and Steve, we just, we're going to have that meeting. We still should be able to correct my friend, will we be able to vote on the entire document tonight or would that have to happen on Wednesday?
I would think.
You can vote on it tonight, but the final vote would be Wednesday after looking at the editorial changes.
That's fine.
So is everybody comfortable, we just voted on that, so everybody's comfortable with that, that change?
Which, which, which change? No, we didn't vote on the one you just suggested.
Yeah, the main.
And I honestly, I want to look at the language before I agree to add it.
Then I'll prepare the language for the final draft.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Brian and Steve?
No.
Ready?
I'm ready.
I just, and I, I don't want to belabor this, I know we have a lot to do. I sent out something yesterday that I guess got bounced back, so it went out this morning. I don't know if you saw it. On rule 1.6, Rules of Order and Civility. The, the very first sentence, is everyone there that's where it says elected town officials, appointed town officers and town employees shall treat members of the public with respect and expect the same in return in official interactions as well as in other in-person or virtual electronic interactions? Just should that language at the very end add at a meeting? My, my, my concern is this, and, and again, it, it seems to me that it's, it's a little troubling to have that language the way it is because it, it, it appears that you know, we're maybe trying to regulate conduct outside the course of a, of a meeting? Am I reading too much into that? And that, and that kind of goes along with section 1.6D.
Well, I mean, here's what I would offer to that, is that if you limit it to meetings, then, I mean, I could see, you know, when you go into any agency to deal with the town on any number of matters, would there be the tax collector, the registrar voters, that's not necessarily a meeting. And so, I mean, I guess if there's a way that you want to try and limit it to in their official capacity, but I mean, I guess it kind of reminds me of those law school days where they say really that you can't take your hat off as a lawyer, in, in a lot of occasions, you know, there's no convenient way to take that off. I mean, when do you want the elected or appointed town officers to be able to disrespect the?
No, I get it. And so, so Steve Mednick, I guess at the beginning of this meeting, you, you kind of indicated that we're almost going to have a legislative history of each one of these sections that the public could go to in case there's a question as to what a provision means, correct?
Yeah. This is also, Commissioner John, one of those sections where I changed the language a little bit based on the comments that were made by somebody where I just have the term town officials, because town officials takes into account elected and appointed officials and employees. And that opening paragraph is meant to be broader, then it narrows down in A, to deal with the workplace and town operation.
Okay.
And B and beyond deals with meetings and decorum, et cetera. This is a very difficult area. You, you probably know this, I've been dealing with it in several municipalities. And it's not meant to because it talks about in-person and virtual electronic interactions, which are terms that are being used now with regard to meetings. But they could also be construed to deal with Facebook and other forms of activity that are not regulated by this charter and not regulated by any of our, any of our current rules internally. And representing several legislative bodies, we're beginning to look at these issues. But that, that is not the intent of this section. It really is to deal with operations and public meetings for the most part. But I think it narrows down within the section itself.
All right, then that, that's fine. I appreciate that clarification. I'm just concerned of whether something like this is even enforceable, to be honest with you. But I, but I understand it. I don't want to belabor it right now and feel like we, we can move on.
I mean, if you want, so I mean, I think that the official interactions covers a lot of it, but if you wanted to put in the word official after that last word, interactions, if that would make more sense to you?
There, or virtual electronic official interactions?
Or maybe, let's see, you're should treat members of the public in official interactions as well as in other I, I could, sounds kind of redundant, but
Yeah.
As well as in other official in-person and other virtual and
Why don't we say same in return in live, in-person or virtual official interactions?
There you go. And we won't vote till we see it along with the previous one.
Thank you for hearing me out on that. I appreciate it.
Yeah, makes sense.
Well, why don't we simply say in-person or, you know, instead of other, why don't we simply say in returning in in-person or, or virtual official interactions? Okay, I've, I've, I know what to do. All right.
Okay.
Official, got it.
All right.
All right. I think that's it in chapter one, unless somebody else has something else to bring up. Chapter two. Actually, I don't know who it was, but one of the comments, just want to prove that we read the comments. Section 2.2, I changed the title of the section from electors to rules pertaining to electors. And because I think it's, you know, it's broader than just, we have a definition for what an elector is. And I thought it was clearer to indicate that these are rules that pertain to the electors. So that change should be in the documents you have in front of you, I believe. I may be wrong. The next change was something I didn't understand, and this is in section 2.4C. And, and I think that I really do want Pam Iacono to look at the language. As I was going through this language, because somebody raised the question that they weren't sure that subsection C2 work the way we thought it needed to work. I started looking at the language and realized that I need to have some language that's in the current charter that, that is missing that addresses the fact that the minority candidates shall be of, be not of the same political party that gets the highest number of votes is what it comes down to. And so there needs to be some language, which I'll run by you when we meet in 48 hours, that I think addresses the issue and gets us over the hump on that issue. So there will be a modification in subsection C, both on the one and two side, just to make sure that that language is very clear regarding how this is supposed to work. The, see what else there is in this section, hold on. I'll make a note here. I have nothing, whoops. I have nothing else in this chapter. The next change would be in Article Three, or an issue that was raised is in Article Three. I don't know if you want to deal with this now or you want to deal with this later in the proceedings. This is the issues, the, the issue of minority party representation on the RTM. Is this an issue we want to discuss now or do you want to raise it at a later stage, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I think that we've had some discussion. Well, let's see here. We, we're going to, we'll take up any additional changes to the RTM at the end of this meeting.
Okay. All right, so I'll just mark it for that. Just going through here. Another section where questions were raised, and I think the Vice Chair Brogan raised the question is 3.8. The RTM shall not diminish by ordinance, vote or otherwise the powers and duties vested in the first select person by this charter. So I'll defer to the Vice Chair.
I, yeah, I think as a lawyer, I understand this is the law. And I think you've clarified that this guess I bring it up to see if anybody else has, I noticed we got some public comments on that. I guess I just bring it up to see whether anybody has a problem since it was brought as a public comment. I could go either way or not.
Is this 3.8? Sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
And John.
powers denied to the RTM, okay.
Yeah, I looking at my notes here. I, that was one of the things I mentioned in my notes that I sent out. You know, why, why do we need this provision? Because it clearly would be illegal if the RTM adopted an ordinance that reduced or in some way modified the powers of the first select person. So that was my question too, that if you want to leave this type of language in, maybe what you have to put in is and Steve Mednick, I think this is correct, that the RTM may not by ordinance or otherwise diminish any authority vested by this charter to any office commissioner or board identified in the charter. They, they're not allowed to do that to, for any, anybody, not just the first They, they're not allowed to do that to, for any, anybody, not just the first select person.
Yeah.
So, so I guess my question, is it necessary first? And if you think it's necessary, I don't think it should just be limited to the first select person. It should cover all the bodies that are mentioned within the charter.
I think our town attorney has a comment on this.
Yeah, I was gonna, thank, I was gonna say exactly what John was saying. Because otherwise, well, it shouldn't be limited. So you, you stole my thunder there. I, I also think that this was inserted originally, again, when we were considering having, eliminating rather, the Board of Select Persons. And that's what prompted this to go in. So whether it's necessary is up to the commission, because it is certainly the law.
And I agree with you, John Matola, that, and thanks for flagging this, that it's not necessary. And I would, I would advocate for removing it. I, I think that Attorney Baldwin's correct in that it is a vestige of, when we were transitioning, we were going down a different path of the form of government. Any other comments on that?
No, I, I, I'm fine with John's substitute language, or if the commission wants to get rid of it, whatever everybody else wants to do.
What are we doing, John? Which do you prefer?
I'll make a motion to eliminate.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Chris Brogan, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Excellent. In the next chapter, Article four, you will note in section, it's not a substantive change, but I want to bring it to your attention, 4.2, 4.2B4, and the appointment authority of the Board of Select Persons. I put language in there that was consistent. It basically says if the charter is silent and the statutes confer power on the Board of Select Persons to make appointments, they should make those appointments. I had a language in there that was the first selectman. The first select, if the first select person had the statutory authority, it would be the Board of Selectmen. That is incorrect. It should be the Board of Selectmen's authority. They have the ability to make appointments, that the statutes give them authority to do so. So it's, it's really a cleanup correction.
Okay.
One other question, I, it may have been resolved and I may have missed it. But when we go into 4.37, I have a note on the side. This was regarding the state of the town address. Somebody indicated that the first select person already gives that address. And did we want to have, there was a provision in the charter, we moved it out to a question. Were we resolved that this does not need to be in the charter? There was one last caption that I had here that I don't think was resolved. And I just want to make sure.
What was the number? 4.3, what was the letter?
4.3B, it would be right after seven. The comment is attached to, to item number seven.
I, this is Jim. I, I do recall this being resolved, maybe not the last meeting, but the meeting before. And it was agreed that it would go out, but that's my memory. I, I haven't scoured the minutes. But John Matola, I think that you, you were in agreement with the, the, well, anyway, I, I, I think that that was resolved, as memory serves me. Because we were talking about the, the Board of Finance and their purview and that was the auditing language after the annual audit and all that stuff.
Is it, is it already out? Because I don't see it in here.
It's not in there, but there's a comment on the side.
Pam, if you, if you're able to, to go up to the, the bar and, and look at comments, open up that box and you'll see his comments. That may not be checked.
Gotcha. Sorry, I was actually finally working off a real piece of paper.
And that's correct.
I rem, I thought we resolved it and got rid of it because it wasn't necessary.
That's all I wanted to know. Good.
Okay.
Also, I wanted to go back to contracts if we could.
Yep.
So section one contracts, the last paragraph, the RTM is authorized to modify the threshold based on the consumer price index or other measure index for inflation or deflation. The provision should not apply to emergency transactions. I, I, I don't think we need this. I know we, we, we kind of just glossed over it at the last meeting and left it. But it, at the last meeting, I don't know that it said the RTM. And we took it out of the other section and I, I just, I don't think that this is necessary. I think it's, I think it might even be a holdover from when we were trying to get rid of the Board of Selectmen.
I'm sorry, Pam, which section is that?
Contracts 1A, the last paragraph.
In four?
Yeah, yeah, it's that sentence that dis-authorized to modify the, I just don't think that's necessary.
1A.
4.2B1A.
And it's on page 38 in the document. And that $100,000 is substantially raised from what it is today, is that correct?
I don't have any problem with that. It's just that this last part where we're all of a sudden, now we're dealing with the consumer price index and yada. I, I'm just like, I don't, I, I think we're overly complicating this.
I, I, I would, I would agree with that because we, we did get rid of that similar provision somewhere else in the charter, so.
Yeah, so I think we just sort of glossed over this without thinking much about it. So I, I, I would move to get rid of it.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Extentions, passes?
So just the section dealing with the consumer price index, not the last sentence.
Correct.
All right, good.
Right sentence.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, let's see here. What's next?
Is there any more on that one, Steve? Because I have one more. I wanted to raise.
I got something in F, but whatever you have.
It's on 4.3C, that's appointment powers, right?
Yep.
And then you go to subsection three, the mediation and resolution of differences.
Yep.
Page 43.
Yeah. I'm misinterpreting this. Like, I understand it. I think the first select person has that authority. What if there's a dispute between, the first select person has a dispute between him herself and another board or commission? Would the first select person be the one to resolve that dispute? Or is that something the Board of Selectmen should resolve? And, and my other follow-up question is, am I reading too much into this?
The reason for the provision, which was drafted, I think it's new, yep, which was drafted when we were looking at the other structure, is you have a very, very weak
Yep.
chief executive. In spite of all the discussion about power grabs and power enhancement, it's a very weak position. You have a lot of elected executive boards and commissions that make department heads appointments. And that was going to continue even if the Board of Selectmen was eliminated and the RTM is reduced into a more robust legislative body. So I thought this was a provision that was useful because it made it clear to everyone that there is a chief executive. There's, there's only two required provisions in the charter. One is to have a legislative body and the other is to have a chief executive officer. The first select person is that. And, and so the concept of mediating and resolving differences is a perfectly logical authority to have. And do they have the ability to operate by fiat? By, you know, by caprice? I don't think so. But I think that this gives a first select person legal authority to go in and try to resolve a problem. If it gets to a point of, of no return, to go to litigation, it could become a political issue, because you could have the composition of these elected boards could be at odds with the composition of the Board of Selectmen. So it could end up in a lot of places. But I thought that having this authority to try to resolve the problems is an important tool. Whether it is definitive is another question. It's not a definitive authority. In most executive situations, in most mayors and even town first select person situations, there is pretty good authority. But in this case, there's not a lot of authority. And I thought this was a lever that a first select person could use to resolve issues. As to a dispute between the first select person and, and one of these other entities, I imagine his or her colleagues on the Board of Selectmen would try to work with them to try to work it out. Those are, those are political and they could have legal consequences. But I'm not sure how you definitively resolve those. But it's one of the problems of your form of government, because you have a very diffuse executive authority. I don't know if that answers your question, but the reason that's the rationale for the provision being there.
I understand what you're saying. My, I guess my only concern is if, if the dispute is with the first select person and another commission or board, then it would seem to me that the first select person shouldn't be the one resolving that dispute. But may, may, and I guess what I'm saying, I, I, I understand that the dispute should be resolved, but maybe it should be by an affirmative vote of the Board of Selectmen. That's all I'm saying.
I, I'll just, if I may just add the comment that I, I don't think that there's a real hammer here. As Steve said, there's no, no absolute power in the first select, select person to do, make another board or commission do something. That's not what this is trying to say. Am I right, Steve? So it's really capturing the spirit of, of, of the situation more than anything else. So I, I.
And, 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 and just to be clear, the people who are listening, the, the, a first select person would have that authority anyway. We're just making it clear in the charter.
Yeah, it, it should be that person's role to mediate and to try to resolve issues. That, that's, that's a fundamental role of the, the CEO.
All right. That's fine. Thank you for answering my question.
Mr. Chairman, should I proceed?
Yes, please.
I believe the next item, and I'm only bringing this up for the Vice Chair, because he put this in, put these requests in writing this morning. Subsection E on staff. I think he's raising an issue that was raised the other evening.
Correct. So this is 4.3E. Help me out, Steve. Where am I looking? The first select may point?
This is E, this.
The language, the RTM. This is, believe me, it's a lawyer comment, not a political comment. I understand, I think, why this is in here, which was addressing a specific incident. But I am, I started thinking about it and we say, we don't say that about any other position in here. So we don't say they shall fund the head of the DPW, the police chief. And it struck me as kind of an odd provision. And I'm always a little bit concerned when you put it in a document, because you had one perhaps bad situation and you try and fix that, you're inadvertently raising some kind of implication somewhere else. So that was my concern. I didn't see what it really added at the end of the day. They should be funding anything that's in charter. So that's why I was thinking, unless somebody wants to tell me I'm wrong about that, we'd take it out.
John Matola.
So I, and, and the reason why we have this language in there, put it in there is because of, really was the chief of staff position. And now the chief of staff position is in the charter, right? We've added it. So it, it, it would certainly be, I don't know if inferred is the right word, but if it's a position that's in the charter, it would be obvious that it has to be funded, right? Because it's a mandatory position in the charter. I guess the question is where we say administrative assistant, excuse me, or equivalent positions. I'm, I'm having trouble talking. Give me a minute.
Okay. Get something to drink. I'll come back to John and Pam.
The next last meeting, it's very emotional.
Now you're making him laugh. This is not fair.
We want to make sure that the first, first select person has a staff. That's the intent. And I think that was the reason why we, we have it in there.
Uh, yeah, I, Pam has a comment.
I, I agree. To me, to me, my interpretation is if it's in the charter, then you're funding it. It's in the charter. You're, you're, you're permitted to hire that person. Legally, you can't hire them and not pay them. So I don't think that we need to have the language regarding the, the funding part. You know, I, I'm also wondering if it should say the first select person may appoint a chief of staff and administrative assistant, and then an S in apostrophe. I mean, that they have other clerical staff in there, or maybe it's covered on, under or equivalent positions and then just end it with a period.
All right. So do we?
No, it's, well, it, it, there is a line that says, in addition, the first select person may employ other such staff as necessary for the administration of official duties as provided for in the budget.
And I did the split because, again, I think that Commissioner Brogan makes the point, you don't change something because it happened once. But if it happened, then it, then it, and I suppose if it happened, the, the chief of staff was not in the charter. And I think Commissioner Matola is saying that makes a difference. I, I had the distinction to make sure she had a basic staff with sufficient funds and let the rest of it up to whatever the budget might provide. That, that's why there was a distinction in that sentence. But I'll leave it up to you to decide. I mean, I tend to agree that if it's in the charter and the first select person makes, makes a budgetary request for chief of staff in the charter, it'd be very hard for the Board of Finance or the RTM to eliminate that. But I'll leave it up to you. I was trying to have protective language. And it did come up in the public hearing that it was mandated, you were basically mandating the legislative body to do something. And I wanted to point out for the record that I do that in charters. I've seen it in charters to make sure that protected positions are fully protected. For example, if you have an internal auditor, you don't want the mayor or first selectman in the legislative body befunding an auditor who is going to do the audits on the mayor or the first selectman. So you make sure there's mandatory funding. You can't go below the prior year's general fund funding. Same is true sometimes with ethics officers and things like that. This is not quite equivalent, but, but I have had provisions like that in, in charters.
So really just, all right, so now I realize we're supposed to literally read this thing in totality, because there, I see your distinction now. That was where, where, where we're reminded that we have to provide sufficient funds. And then for additional staff, you know, making the allowance to employ those people. And that, but that's based on the budget. Is, is that?
That was the distinction.
That's, that's, that's the, that's the intent there.
I was trying to establish the essential group. Maybe the term equivalent positions is ambiguous. But I thought at the very least, the first select person should be assured that they're going to have somebody who could help them as a chief of staff and, and have a secretary, an assistant. Somebody who could help them as a chief of staff and and have a secretary, an assistant who can help them get their work done. Um, I put equivalent positions, which you might not want to call a chief of staff. I don't know, but the uh. Um, but that was the distinction. I was trying to provide protection for those essential positions. And allow for the budget to to the budget debate to determine what else a first selectman might be entitled to.
Yeah, I, okay, I I I. Based on that, I'm personally now would would, I I would keep that the way it's written, but that's just me.
Uh, I I I I share Chris Brogan's um concerns. And not, you know, that it it does seem to. This is what I'm saying. It may solve a problem for the specific position, but I think it might create. A problem by a kind of negative implication for others, so. I would be interested in looking at that. Provision, Steve, that you mentioned. Um, about, I I think it was just that minimum budget requirements for positions or.
Well, the way I did it is it's going to say sufficient funds, which is kind of vague. Uh, that they could not reduce the budget. From, cannot reduce the fund from the prior fiscal year. So that they would have to at least fund it. What they did in the prior fiscal year. They could flatline it.
For just this position or did you do do that for all positions in the?
I was just doing it for the, again, I had the distinction. Created the distinction based on the te- the public testimony or the um the stories that we heard about. The elimination of the Chief of Staff. Um, I was trying to um. Come up with a with language that would provide some assurance of protection. It would be for those two positions, the remainder would be left to the budgetary um. The budgetary condition of the town.
Well, I mean, Chris Brogan has a comment.
Yeah, well, I think as John pointed out, and I I'd forgotten that, that. This wasn't in the charter before. I think that's correct.
I think that's right.
By putting it, it it would be needed, maybe if it wasn't in the charter, by putting in the charter, to me, that. Equates it with every other position in this charter, which should be funded if it's in here. So I I don't think it's needed. I, you know, it's not a huge problem if everybody thinks it should be there.
And I think if you take the language out. But you remain that the other provisions are subject to the budget, it makes it pretty clear. There's an expectation that these will be funded. Even if you take the sufficient funds out. Arguably. Leave it up to you.
What's the uh?
Is there a motion? Anyone?
No, I don't.
Right, well, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To delete. For which the R P N shall appropriate sufficient funds from E of four point. The C. Where are we? Four point. Four point three. Three D.
Yeah, four point three E.
E, sorry. So I so move.
Is there a second?
So your motion is to eliminate the.
To eliminate the language that says for which the R T M shall appropriate sufficient funds. And put a period there.
So the first select person may appoint a chief of staff and administrative assistant or equivalent positions, period.
Correct.
And then the rest of it stays in, but you get rid of.
Correct.
For which the R T M shall, okay. I'll second that.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Pam?
I just am wondering. If you if you take that out, which I completely see the point. But then, in addition, the first select person may employ. Such other staff necessary for the miss- administration administration of official duties as provided for in the budget. Is anyone going to misconstrue that to say? That it's got to be covered in the budget? That's my only problem with now taking out that that qualification before. That's why when I, when I. When Mr. Brogan first brought it up, I agreed, but now in reading the whole thing taken together, I'm wondering if you do just need that clarification because of that second sentence. Remember, most people that read this are laymen and not lawyers.
Can you not hear John Matola? Is that what you're saying?
I I think Jim was talking, Baldwin. I couldn't hear him.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was on mute. Um, I was suggesting you do the flip side, do what you just did and and take out as provided for in the budget. So that it's, again, it's in the charter. And it's it's to be. Understood that you 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 can't slash it. It's got to be funded, just as you, the same rationale as you did for uh the the earlier deletion. Just take out the uh as provided for in the budget.
So so strike for which the R T M shall appropriate sufficient funds and then strike as provided for in the budget?
Yes.
Okay, so we would, okay. So this first motion we have strikes shall appropriate sufficient funds. That's on the, it's properly before us, so we need to either amend that. Well, let's just vote on that and then we can make a separate motion.
Well, personally, I wa- alright.
Wouldn't it be better to amend the motion?
Yeah, because I don't want it without, I don't want to take one without the other.
Then the. The sponsor of the amendment is willing to take. And the motion is willing to take an amendment. Pam?
Oh, great. So I would move then to amend it to strike as provided for in the budget.
Do you accept that as a friendly amendment, Mr. Brogan?
I will accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, great. So.
I do, I I do have a que- uh, I have a question, though, okay. So maybe, maybe it's Mr. Baldwin. So at the end of the day. If there's no money, there's no position. That's true of, I suppose, of any employee in town. So at some point in the budget process, if the Board of Finance just decides we're spending too much on whatever. And they cut it, that means less people. Well, I I. I actually think that because this is now in the charter. That 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 can't be done because those are line items in the charter. And and that would be verboten by being in the charter. So my comment then is. Is there, this is kind of open ended, so the first sentence has two specific spots. The second one. Is a little bit open ended, which it kind of has to be about how many. But there should be some, I guess it's saying there needs to be a discussion on that in the budget process. I guess that's how I read that. Like, it's not that one you got to talk about and convince somebody you need the staff.
It it also has the qualifier in that second sentence about necessary for the administration, so. A judgment call can be made about the necessity, whereas the um Chief of Staff. And administrative assistant are specified. So I just like to mention that.
So read as a whole, it's saying the first two you got to do and you got to fully fund. Anything else, you got to convince the budget people that you need it. You know, you have some legal, right, but that's kind of what it's saying to me.
And that and that's, it's John Matola speaking. That's no different from any other department. There's certain. Certain. Positions in departments that are mandated by charter, but there are many positions that. A case has to be made that this position is necessary, so it's no different than any other. Department.
Okay.
And and to your point, Chris, um, we don't say that anywhere else in the charter about any of the other positions, so that's why. Taking out the reference to the budget. I I would advocate for that, just for the reasons that you stated earlier.
Well, don't speak so soon. There's actually another reference in the next section.
Oh, boy.
So on this one, we have a motion before us, which has been amended so that it would, um, the entire motion would be in. Section four point three, are we in four point three? E. It would then remove from the. First sentence. For which the R T M shall appropriate sufficient funds and then also. Remove from the second sentence as provided for in the budget. Am I getting that correctly, Mr. Brogan?
That is it, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor of that signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Then um. I did see that in the next section. F, under the Town Administrator. It says the first select person shall appoint and the budget shall provide for. So are we encountering the same issue?
I think so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay.
I I agree.
So I'd entertain a motion to remove that um. Phrase, and the budget shall provide for. Pam? I have a second for that.
Second.
But Chris Brogan. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Oh, John Matola.
No, but I don't know if Steve was going to stay in Town Administrator or move on, because there's something I wanted to raise.
I was going to, the, yeah, this is a, an issue that people have raised questions about. I think the Vice Chair had. Went on it. I think you have one on it, so I defer who to the member of the commission who jumps in first.
I'll let the Vice Chair go first.
Okay, Mr. Vice Chair.
Um, this is the, I had an issue of the um. Four point three F. Uh, shall point a town administrator. I was going to suggest. Uh, shall be nominated, or what the word is, and approved by the Board of Selectmen. Um, I think I had mentioned this the last meeting, but I think it got a little bit lost in our discussion on this point. My, uh, I think because this is, we're trying to, I think we all agree that this should be as not. Should be nonpartisan position. And I think having the Board of Selectmen. Vote on it. Most important thing, it requires an airing of the appointment and a discussion, and so. Um, I think that gives the public some confidence that it is somebody with the qualifications we have in here. And it's somebody, you know, who is not a partisan person, so I think that just adds to uh. Potential success of this position as we want it to be, so that's. So that's what I would put in.
John Win?
Uh, in in thinking about this, I'm a little bit concerned about the Board of Selectmen interviewing someone um for some real, you know, practical reasons. One is. Exposing the person that would want this position, which we think might be relatively few and narrow um to this. Process that is a little bit maybe difficult to imagine, first off. Second is. Would they really, would the public really get the transparency and information you're seeking? If it's an employment discussion, that would be. Not allowed under F O Y as far as a public meeting goes, because it's something around employment discussions and review, so you'll never achieve the objective you're trying to do. If that was what your objective is. So the fact that, I understand the objective to not have a political appointment in this, but the fact that we have. A position description well, well articulated, reasonably described, overseen by an H R person. You can get around that political appointment process or problem.
Okay. Excuse me.
So I guess my bottom line is I wouldn't advocate to require the Board of Selectmen to be integral to the interview process.
John Matola.
I hear what Mr. Win's saying and um. Hear what Mr. Uh, Brogan's saying. I I do think there has to be some. Type of approval by the Board of Selectmen on a position like this, and I think there are ways to. Protect, I guess, the confidentiality of someone applying for the position. But still having. That, I think, important um. Body, the Board of Selectmen voting on such an important position, so. I, I, I don't think it's a position like this that it's appropriate just to leave it to the first select person. And I I do think we should should add some language. Uh, that this is a position that's su- subject to the approval of the Board of, of the Board of Selectmen. I'd also, I mean. Let's, we'll take it one step at a time. I would also advocate that. The person, the Town Administrator can only be terminated by a Board of Selectmen, but. I think we should take the first step first with respect to whether this needs to be approved by a Board of Selectmen. I I gave everyone some language from Weston. Which says there shall be a Town Administrator who shall report directly to the First Selectmen. First selectman or select person still has managerial authority over this individual. Um, it goes on to say that the Town Administrator shall be hired by and shall be subject to dismissal by the First Selectmen. In both cases with prior approval of the Board of Selectmen. So the way I read that is that the First Selectmen will go through that process of. Uh, finding somebody along with Human Resources Department, but once. Uh, he or she has a candidate, that candidate needs to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. So I thi- I don't think the Board of Selectmen will be involved in the interview process, but once someone is selected by the First Select Person. Then there needs to be approval by the Board of Selectmen. So I would ask you to look at that language. I think it's pretty good. Um, and those are my comments.
Okay, John Win had his hand up.
Is is there any opportunity to use language, something around their approval would not be unreasonably withheld? Because I understand the objective you're trying to achieve. I also don't want to get caught in a situation where we have a. Dispute amongst the body, so there would need to be really strong justified, defined reason. And having something that would not be unreasonably withheld, some language around that.
I think, um, but is there a response to that? Is there, that's a question, and I'm not sure.
Okay, just have a qualification. Is that about the selection or the removal?
Uh, the selection.
Yeah. Think I. I think I'm okay with something like that. I can, I I agree with Commissioner Win that we don't want to make this a. The person's just unending group interviews, but I think if we make it clear that the Board is, the first select person does the. Interviewing and the H R person sets it all up. Um, like, like some other positions in town, there is a, somebody nominates, the other person has to approve, but they get, it's one up, they don't get to see the whole list of candidates and. Pick and choose, that, you know, that I agree with. So if that, if uh Commissioner Win's suggestion clears that up, I'm fine with that.
Well, I would, I would like to comment on the the proposal in general. I think that um. You know, we we do need to discuss the removal process, and maybe that's where we find some common ground, but. I see it a little differently um in terms of. The, I think we've made some good movement in the right direction here by laying out qualifications, by requiring the Human Resources Department. To pre-qualify candidates to make sure that they do meet these bars that we've set here in the charter. Um, but in inherent in the language of being the principal advisor to the first select person, I do think that we should give. And again, remember, we're not just talking about this first select person. We're talking about whoever occupies the office as long as this charter governs. That they should be able to pick who that advisor is to help them manage um the town they were elected to manage. And um. Maybe if there, things go awry, that, you know, there is a removal process. But, and I don't, I don't see that here, and I'm just not sure if we revert to the general removal sections in the charter, which is. What I suspect Steve will say, but I would not be in favor for um of changing this at the. What I suspect Steve will say, but I would not be in favor for, um, of changing this at this point, so that's where I'm at.
And if I may, for.
Sure.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, without debating, um, it's, uh, serving at the pleasure of the first select person, and, um. So it wouldn't go through a normal removal process, um. A- as I've looked at these positions around the state, and there was testimony, I think in Hampden this year, that some of you heard. Um, uh, what, um, most of the people who've held these positions have said that if they don't have the confidence. Of the chief executive, um, they shouldn't be in the position ultimately, that they, they, um. And so most of them, most of these positions, many of them are at the pleasure of. The first selectman or select person, or, um, or the board. It's not a, um, it's not a forecause termination. This is a member of a cabinet in effect, and, and while there, there's qualifications. That are really critical, um, they still have to serve, uh, uh, with the chief executive. And that, that was the rationale in drafting it the way it is, and there are differences in some of the towns, but, uh, many of the towns. Maintain the position at the pleasure of either the chief executive or the Board of Executives is what it comes down to.
Good point. John Matola.
Oh, I've heard everyone, like, why don't we just make a motion and vote on it?
Sure.
So I, I would make a motion and to empower Attorney Bednick to add language that the, um. The hiring of a town administrator needs to be approved by the Board of Selectmen, that's my motion, and, uh. I didn't want to want to second it.
Is there a second?
Well, that's, could I ask for possibly a, a friendly amendment to that about not having it be?
Seconded, the, and then now, the, is there any discussion, and we're going to John Winth?
Sorry, I was gonna ask if, um, my apologies for jumping out of turn, um, uh, uh, uh. To possibly consider an amendment to that, to not. Require the approval of the Board of Selectmen, but that their approval may not be unreasonably withheld.
Uh, that's, um, that's up to the sponsor of the amendment, uh.
Yeah, I, John, I, I kind of know what direction this motion's going, I think. So I'm not gonna accept that amendment, and, and I say that respectfully because I don't know what unreasonably withheld means, so. Um, I, I, I won't, I won't agree to that, um, I think we should just vote. I think you might like the outcome of the vote, so that's why I'm moving on with it, so.
I don't, I honestly don't know what the outcome of the vote would be, but I, I would add.
Maybe I'll be surprised.
Possibly, I, I would just add that, you know, before we do this, we do have to remember there was a member of the public last Thursday. That did kind of, I think it was last Thursday, um, uh, uh, it's kind of blending together, but somebody did flag for us. You know, have we addressed the scenario where there are, um, two, two select persons? Of the opposing party of the, of the first selectman, so there's a scenario in which, you know, that might not be good at all. That, um, they would be the ones kind of picking the chief advisor for the first select person, so I would just restate that during our. Discussion of this motion, I understand it's still on the table, and, um, I, you know, I'd, I'd also add that. The current first select person did in fact hire a Democrat to fill this role as it's, uh, you know, being laid out here, so. It's not, you know, a hyper partisan, and I think that there is a, there's a case to be made that, um, it's, it's done for merit, but anyway. Um, any other discussion before we take a vote on this? All right, all those in favor, raise your hand or signify. Well. All those opposed? Oh, you were right then, John, the motion fails.
Hi, excuse me, this is Prue, can I have that count, please?
Sure, it was.
Four to two.
In favor, John Matola and Chris Brogan, and the rest opposed.
Okay, and did that have an actual article number?
Yes.
Four point, was that?
Four point three F. F.
Okay, thank you.
I have nothing else in Article Four. I have nothing, I don't think, let me just quickly go through, Article Five, so I don't know if anybody else does. Article Six. Um. The vice chair raised a question, um, I, I'll raise it because I don't think it's, I, I don't think it should be controversial. Uh, but I didn't want to add it as a Scrivener's correction, that the constables should be electors, remember we moved the constables. From elected positions to appointed positions, and they fall in six point one. And a number of, uh, appointed town officers are listed, except for the ones who are excluded. Uh, and the constables were left out, and I think, and I don't want to speak with the vice chair, but I guess I am, um, he had suggested that the constables be. Electors of the town.
That makes sense.
Is that okay, is a Scrivener's correction, is everybody okay with that? All right, good. Um.
Can I have something else on that, constables?
Yep.
Um, one of the people from Public Comment had mentioned that there's no term defined, is that correct? Does, does there need to be a term defined, or is there already a term to define?
No. We'll get to that. We'll get that, it's in seven seventeen, why don't we do it then, is that okay?
Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I'm, okay, so that's not till later, got it.
Yeah.
Oh, John Matola has a question or comment.
Hey, Steve, um.
Yes.
On six point nine. It says section one point fifteen to one point sixteen. I thought, isn't that supposed to, I don't think there's a one point fifty or sixteen, isn't that supposed to be one point five?
It says deleted.
No, those provisions, those are now one point. It's the sections at the end of section one, I thought I made the change there, I guess I didn't.
It says deleted.
I think, hey, Steve, I think it's one point five and one point six, that's it.
It is one point five and one point six, that's right.
That's why I wanted to make sure of that.
Yeah. I'll just make sure that's absolutely clear, because I thought I did, because those numbers changed. Thank you.
Yeah.
That's all I have in six, in seven?
I, I, I have stuff in six.
All right.
Um. The six point two AMB. I, I don't know why this is in here. Why, why are we, why are we writing job descriptions and such by ordinance? I, I, is this a holdover that should have been struck?
It's a different color.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that.
I, I, I think we were, I don't think we need this, that, I think that whole area can come out.
Well, it was approved on the twenty fifth of April, so it's your pleasure.
I think that maybe that was when we were in. I think that's before we had taken out the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, I would move to.
When we had taken out.
I would, I would move to strike those sections.
I would second that.
I guess I'll ask the attorneys, is this add anything that's not? Kind of at least complied or under, under.
It's any standard language that I recommend. Um, to make sure that you have a best practices standard. For the qualifications of a point that you're not establishing qualifications here, uh, they don't necessarily need to be. Or they could be designated by ordinance, but they don't have to be, they could be, uh, designated by the Human Resources or Personnel Director. Um, but it's a pretty standard provision that I would put in any charter, but it's not necessary, it's not the end of the world. But it does establish the best practices standard for the town.
Uh, this is Jim, I think, uh, Chris, it's, it's new to the charter, and we've, we've, uh, existed. Without this language and done okay, so I don't think it adds anything.
I think this was part of that holdover when the charter was being reworked to envision a, a. A town government without the Board of Select Persons and.
I think that's right.
So what's your pleasure, is there a motion?
Uh, there is a motion.
I moved, yeah, I moved to strike it.
And I've seconded it, so the, we're having discussion now, so is there any further discussion on this? John Matola.
My only comment is I like the language, that's all I'm gonna say, so thanks.
Well, it's, but it's moved and seconded, um, so we're gonna take a vote on it, I, you know, I think. I guess move to put it back in, but all those in favor of removing it signify by saying aye, or raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed? Fails. What, um.
What was the vote, I thought it was for?
Three, three, right?
Oh, it was three, three, that's right. So it remains in.
Marlene, how did you vote? She's frozen.
I think, I thought it was three, two, to keep it in. And I misunderstood.
I think it was three, three.
I.
You're muted, Marley.
I'm, I'm, can you hear me?
No, I can't.
Okay, I voted with John Matola and Chris Brogan.
Okay.
It was three, three.
Yeah.
Our language remains in. I don't have anything else in Article Six, is anybody else? Article Seven? I don't think I have anything until we get to constables. In seven point seventeen, anybody has anything that I missed? Please speak up, I'm sorry.
What, what, what number is that, I'm sorry?
Seven point seventeen, constables, you wanted to address the issue term?
Yeah, I have something earlier.
All right.
Um. Seven point six, Director of Public Works. Um. Um, section B, number three. I had someone reach out to me who was an engineer, who, who explained that. You really can't be the chief technical advisor of the town if you're not an engineer, um, so. Um. I had language to substitute in there, hold on, which I'm so efficient, I'm not efficient, um.
That's seven, six, three, on page.
Yep, seven, six, three.
On page sixty.
Yeah, so, um. I would amend that to say, adh- adhering to town human resources practices and procedures. Hire slash employ a town engineer who shall be the chief technical advisor and keep the rest of all that language.
I'm sorry, so B would be, B three would be the.
B three, yeah.
Free what? Child.
Adhering to the human resources practices and procedures, hire slash employ a town engineer. Who shall be the chief technical advisor of the town and all departments, except the Board of Education and all of the rest of that. The intent there is that the department will have an engineer who will be the chief technical advisor. It's codifying that in the charter, and that, that the chief technical advisor really isn't the director of public works if he's not an engineer. Since we removed the engineering qualification.
So you're saying that the director of public works shall hire somebody who shall be the chief?
Correct.
Right. If you could send me that language, that would be helpful.
Can, can I, can I suggest instead of hire, say, appoint, just because. Uh, a new director would come in, but you have the existing, uh, town engineer, for example, just. Makes it, I think, uh, easier to transition from the new head to the, uh, existing engineer.
Okay, so just do a point?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could send that language over, that'd be great.
Okay.
All right.
Um, I, sorry, Steve, I missed one earlier. Maybe it's a technical thing.
Are we okay with that, you, you don't need a vote consensus? On Pam's issue, I just want to make sure, okay. Did I miss one of yours, I'm sorry, Chris.
I'm sorry, well, I think I gave them wrong reference, six point four B, um.
I'm sorry.
So it's just that, it says the members of the Ethics and Golf Commission, so commence your terms on April one. In the year, and then I think you added in, if not appointed. Um, six point, what page is that on now, forty eight?
Um, fifty one.
Forty eight, fifty one.
Fifty one on those.
Yeah, if they, if they do not make the appointment by April one.
Yeah, they should.
You want to change that to June?
Well, no, that, we have this forty five day period that they, they hold over.
Yeah.
But for everybody else, if somebody's not appointed in forty five days, they're out, and. You know, there's nobody in that, there's a vacancy on the board, I think the same should apply to these two commissions. It's just following the language in the paragraph before, carrying the whole thing over. And I, I just put a date instead of, I think it says forty five days in the other one, you could put forty five days if you want.
All right. Is everybody okay with the forty five day rule?
This is Jim, I, I, as an alternative to that, and I'm not, not advocating one way or the other. Is you could just say that their term ends, leave it at that, uh, knowing full well that. An appointment has to be made for the vacancy for whenever it is, I mean, it's just. So why, why, why do you need forty five days for this commission in particular, which rarely meets? As opposed to other boards and commissions that do have business on a regular basis within those forty five days? That the, uh, the, the Board of Select Persons or the first select person has to fill all those other positions. It's just, uh. It, it's just forty five days, but in the case of the Ethics Commission, it's, it's rarely used, and, and I think the important thing is to. Make the appointments. So it's.
So, so you're saying, but put a hard date, I, I just think there should be a hard date when a vacancy occurs. There should, you, there should never be, it shouldn't be just somebody hanging on because for whatever reason, an appointment wasn't made for months on end.
Yeah, they, so they, they should, they should not remain in office at the end of their term, at the end of their term, the, it, it is a vacancy, there is.
Oh, I see what you're saying, um. Yeah, I'm okay with that.
You're saying there should not be a continue to serve until the successor is appointed and qualified?
Right, for, for this commission in particular, I don't think it's, it's really necessary or applicable.
Well, we've had those cases, but again, that's why we moved it back, because of the summer recesses and whatnot. We were kind of in an odd situation of hearing cases with some members maybe not technically still on or something, it was a little weird. Uh, but. Either way, I just want to make sure you can't get a permanent temporary person.
That creates an interesting situation, Chris, that you just described.
I know, it was a little bit weird, um, so. I hate to say it, but it might it might be deserving to have language in there that speaks to the situation where there is an issue before the board and and, uh, sitting members maybe should, uh, hear that issue, uh, till its conclusion. But I know it's late in the game, but you just brought it up and it's a good point. Yeah, I'd have to think that one through. Yeah. At this point, I'd stick. It it could be a good one, but I think we're I'm afraid to to stick that one at the end for fear of something else going on. That could go on for that could go on for a long time, as you know. It's interesting issue. Uh, but. Well.
So what are we doing?
I would go for a forty-five day holdover, but I'm not hard and fast on that. But just either it ends on April one or has forty-five days, but definitely at the end of forty-five days. I'd say that's that's it. I was just trying to be consistent with the other commissions.
So essentially, the other one has that qualifier because you're coming into office and you need time. You need a runway to get all these people appointed. So that's I imagine why that was written that way originally. This one's in April. The person's already been in office. They've been notified that they've got to make their appointments. They've had got a runway to get there. We've given them till April to find their people, you know. The Attorney Baldwin probably has a point. They should be on notice. You need to get it done. So I I agree with you. Want I I I agree with you one hundred percent. It cannot. They cannot remain here you know, in perpetuity. So I I I would say just end it on April first. You know, the administration just has to get their act together and get to get it done.
I'm I'm.
It's a sixty-five day rule, not a forty-five day rule, by the way.
Yeah.
Whatever. Sorry.
Yeah, and that's even true. Now, now you're into April. They're they're there for a while. I I would say just end it. You're done. Goodbye. Thank you for your service.
Okay.
So in the event there's a vacancy and the Appointing Authority does not appoint a new member by April first, the position shall, um, remain vacant until filled. Is that what you're saying, Pam?
Yes.
All right, you got two different alternatives here. Help me out.
So.
It ends on April first. Their their appointment and their term ends. They're they they leave.
Right. So you so you, Steve, you just delete the second sentence and be there.
The member.
Yeah.
Just ended at April first.
Well, that says when they begin their appointment. It doesn't say.
Okay.
Their term ends. I I I know what you want to do. I'll if if you want it that the position ends at the end of their term, I'll draft language is very clear in that regard.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Is that consensus?
Yes. Consensus, but we'll vote when we see the language.
I'll do my best.
Two others. We have two others like that already.
A lot of pressure on me here, guys.
I know. And we only have a limited number of minutes left in this meeting, so.
Right. We're almost. I I'm almost at the end. Um. Does anybody else have anything before? Constables? If we're okay with that?
Um, oh, no, sorry.
Hmm, Pam. You're using up a lot of tickets in this one.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. That's why I said we probably needed another meeting. Maybe I lied. Maybe it's not fifteen minutes. Um. Public Works Director. I thought that we had added that person to be, um, ex officio to also the Flood and Erosion Control Board.
It's under the Flood and Erosion Control Board.
Right. So but then it says under the direct under the Director of Public Works, Section Four, be ex officio member without vote of the Town and Planning and Zoning Commission with respect to planning and of the Parks and Rec Commission. It's not listed under here. Should it be? And then that's question number one. And if it should be, it's not really the Director of Public Works. My understanding that 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 person is somebody from DPW, which tends to be the town engineer.
Of what? Of the flood prevention?
Yeah.
Well, we, in our language, it's the Director of Public Works shall be a nonvoting ex officio member of the commission. It's the language that was approved.
Okay, so you either need you. We need to do one of two things. Don't we need to add that?
Add it here. Yeah.
Okay. And then but realistically, the feedback we got from the department, it's not the it's not the DPW. It's it's really a designee of his. Does that matter?
Well, we can say the Public Works Director or designee.
Okay.
But here you want it to be an ex officio or not. Is he ex officio on town planning and zoning? Or does he appoint a designee there? And Parks and Rec?
Honestly, honestly, I have no idea. He's definitely ex officio on Parks and Rec. I don't know about town plan and zoning. Do you want me to do more on this and then send it back to you guys since we have to meet again anyway?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I thought it was the director.
Okay. Yeah, why don't you do that?
I'll send a revision in to everyone and we can go from there.
Be consistent. There. All right. Are we ready for constables? Are we ready for constables or anything else? All right, seven point seventeen. What do you want to have for a term?
What do they serve right now? Two years?
I'd have to look. Hold on.
I'm pretty sure they serve two years.
I think it's two years, but let me just check.
I'll look at it.
Got it here. Constables. Two years. Two years.
Yeah, then.
Yeah, keep it at that.
Good idea.
I mean, now it's an appointment. It's a little bit easier to do. Do you want to do it? Or we just keep it simple, stupid?
Your call.
Um, I don't think we have any other appointments or for that short of a time.
Four years. It's this is a judgment.
Oh, yeah, the tree warden.
It went for one year.
The tree warden is two. The tree tree warden by statute is now up to two years.
Yeah.
It's a.
It's a big one.
So what are we considering expanding this to four? Would it would be co-terminus with the elections? Maybe?
Yeah. I don't know. Can we? Actually, you really kind of need to think about that. If it's every two and when it's happening and if the person's just coming into office, I think we got to. That's not a simple answer.
And and Steve, do you have them staggered? Or are you gonna?
We have not. We have not discussed that. Um. That would probably be up to the Appointing Authority. Since it was silent, the presumption would be no unless you wanted them staggered.
I think we need to write something up on that.
Yeah, what was the comment on the other night? Um.
Just that there was no term.
Okay.
I think they need to be staggered. I think there needs to be a term. I think you probably need to figure out how that works in an election cycle.
Adopted in November. Um. The current constables are where in their term. They'll still be in a term through the end of this current elected term. They they would be through the a year from November. So we would be looking at starting terms in January, let's say, January of twenty twenty-four, right after the twenty twenty-three election. Those constables will remain in office until November twenty twenty-three, roughly. The current elected ones, right?
Because we 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 know all of our people term out in November.
All right, so we would make the appointments effective November something twenty twenty-three. So what you can do if you want to stagger, you would appoint two for a two-year term and two for a four-year term. And that's the way you create your stagger in November of twenty twenty-three.
And then the question.
You want to do it?
The question is still remaining whether it's four years or two-year terms, right?
We can't stagger them if they're two-year terms. They.
Right, 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 right. Okay, so with a four-year term, that makes sense.
And ultimately, yeah, the the first, yeah, the first one's appointed the two-year term. We get a four-year term upon reappointment.
Perfect.
The next cycle. All right? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Um, so after this, do we, what issues do we have left?
The only issue I have is, and I see the gentleman's been here for the entire meeting, is the, um, a flood prevention, climate resilience and erosion control. I think the big issue is the alternate members. I think is the outstanding issue there. And there was an issue Commissioner Brogan had on the Board of Library Trustees, um, whether those positions should be staggered. And I'm gonna have to create. I'm probably not gonna do it. I'll probably do it when it's at the Board of Select. Let's create the transition provision to create the, uh. But if you say you want to stagger, we'll create the transition language while it's at the Board of Select.
Yeah, that one, I just wanted to make sure the math worked. I good at figuring. Yeah, if it works, it's fine.
All right, so if I have an instruction that we should do the stagger if the math works, I'll find out. I'll try to find out before our meeting on third on Wednesday. Um, then that issue is gone. And I guess the issue is, do you want to do alternates for a flood prevention? Then you want to go back to the issue with the RTM, Mr. Chairman, I think. And that'll be it. Unless John, obviously.
John Matola has his hand raised and time is really running short, so.
So all all I want to mention on just the budget process, I'm gonna make a motion and um. I I appreciate the changes, um, that were made. Uh, I would ask that section nine point two B two, uh, have language in it that that joint meeting is run is run by the, uh, Board of Finance and chaired by the Board of Finance Chairperson. For all the reasons I mentioned at our last meeting, it's all on the record and I'm I'm gonna make that motion right now.
Is there a second? Pam, you're seconding that motion?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, I am.
Okay.
I I would like it, John, if it's okay for you to read. Um, I would like it personally to read, "The meeting shall be called to order by the first select person and facilitated in turn by the Chair of the Board of Finance," period.
Is that the motion?
Is that a friendly amendment?
Yes, sir, please.
I I'll I'll agree to that.
Thank you, John.
Okay, we've had a moved, second and amended so friendly. Um. Any discussion on the matter? All those in favor signify by saying aye or raising your hand?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
So then you have the resilience issue, then you have the RTM issue and the gentleman.
I I have a I have a budget calendar issue that I think there was just an oversight because some stuff got dropped. Um, it's the the section E, budget calendar, not later than the second meeting of the Board of Select Persons in January, chair the chief fiscal officer um, in accordance with the charter. It's not supposed to be or equivalent official responsible for the management of the budget process. That language needs to be stricken. We we had agreed on the chief fiscal officer. Um, and then in the following consultation with the first select person, the Chair of the Board of Finance and the moderator of the RTM. That that was all in the other language and somehow that stuff got dropped. So I just those are those that that was my.
All right, John Matola.
Yeah, I'll, if that's a motion by Nissai Kona, I would second it.
Sure, thank you. Yes, John, it is. And it's a motion.
Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye or raising your hand? Pam, how are you? Are any opposed? Any extensions? Did you vote, Pam? Oh, all right. Maybe she's frozen.
Oh, she voted.
Oh, passes.
Oh, did we vote?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, I yeah, I was a yes.
Okay.
Hi, I'm sorry. This is Prue. Can you please tell me what num what, um, article that was?
Sure, it's, uh, section nine point one E.
Thank you.
Okay. What's next?
All right, so we have the, uh, flood prevention, climate resilience and erosion control. Uh, I had changed the language, um, um, to include all the references to the updated statute. And I had a comment, um, that want to have three alternate members. Uh, subject to, of course, minority party representation, et cetera. And and it has in the language procedures on how the alternates are called. Little more language I would normally that I normally put in there, but it's it is, uh, not uh, it it's workable. And if that's what the commission is requesting, it's certainly workable language. So I'll leave it up to you to decide what you want to do. And I know that the gentleman from the commission, Mr. Dumchuski, if I'm mispronouncing your name, I apologize, is here. So I don't know if anybody has any questions, but I, uh, yeah, I wanted to, uh, let you know that was an outstanding issue.
Okay, well, I would, um, I would move that we accept the, um, changes to add the alternates as outlined by Attorney Mednick and to adopt the references to the statutes in that public act from twenty twenty-one. And was there anything further on that? Steve?
I'm sorry?
Those were the two changes that we.
Those were the changes. I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. Uh, that's my motion.
Can I, can I, just two quick things? It has the word commission to describe us, but we are a board. And as far as the additional statutes, I, we feel it's important to put inclusive in there just to avoid the confusion. Those are my own comments.
So we we allow the the deference to you because you have put so much time and effort into seeing this through to, uh, normally public members are not allowed to speak at these. So I I understand your passion and we did see you there last Thursday as well and appreciate that. So, um.
I should have I should have picked that up as a Scrivener's correction. Your should be there in that.
I'm gonna withdraw my motion. It had not been seconded. I will make the motion to, um, again, add the alternate, uh, members to add the references to the statute, the statutes, to make the change to the Scrivener's error. With all due respect, um, we don't feel and I, you know, I I do not feel, I should say, and we can discuss this, that we need to, uh, add in all the actual language. The references in the charter is strong and adopts that language and it really is not, um, kind of necessary in superfluous language in this lawyer's opinion. So, um, I would, this is my motion. I'm looking for a second and we can have discussion on it. John Matola seconded it. Is there any discussion on this? I mean, I would like to ask just Steve to confirm that in terms of the statutory reference and the language just for and I'm gonna get your last name wrong, so your edification, so without, um.
I would I would agree. I would, I would agree that the references to the statutes are, are sufficient because if they, if the laws continue to change, you don't want to have antiquated language in the Charter.
So, it's been moved and seconded, um, we take a vote on that. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That, uh, is in there. Thank you very much for your very passionate advocacy on behalf of the organization and you guys do really important work to keep us, uh, above water, literally, so, um, thank you.
And thank you.
Mr. Chairman, um, that's all I have. When, did you want to go back to Article Three?
I, I do, but I, I, if it's okay with everyone, I'm already ten minutes overdue from, I, I was supposed to leave by five forty-five. I'm wondering if we can schedule to meet at four o'clock next Wednesday. Would that be okay with the commission? Because it seems like we've got some, we, we probably need a little more breathing time. But understanding that we, we will be taking up that issue. John Matola.
Yeah, I, that's okay. So, but can we do it at four thirty, Brian?
Yeah, yeah, fine. Yeah, that's fine, whatever.
Four is a little tough.
Okay, four thirty is great if that works.
Four thirty on the eighth? Are we doing four thirty on the eighth?
If that works for everyone, yeah.
That's the.
And the, the order of the day will be, um, remaining item in Section Three.
Alright, I, um, and I have a hard stop that day at six. I hope this should not last long.
Yeah.
You know. Because I missed, you know, so whatever. Okay, so four thirty, Wednesday.
Motion, uh, I'll accept the motion to adjourn and see you everyone on Wednesday. Moved by Pam, seconded by Marlene. All those in favor?
Alright.
Thank everyone.
Thank you all.
See you Wednesday.
Thank you.
Bye.